Hey, everybody. As Misery Loves Company, I want to go ahead and congratulate the University of Georgia Bulldogs. I brought my friend Tommy Fountain, who is an Alabama fan. And you know, I'm all about the orange and blues. I've asked Tommy to give the invocation tonight, which you-
Mayor, I'll be glad to. And I want you to know I have on purple today, not because of TC. This is in sympathy for them. But we were doing ministry today at Monroe area. And so you know, we're the Purple Hurricanes, right? You got it going on. Before I pray, I thought about the new year. And I've never had a beard. This is the first time I've ever even let one start growing like this. And then I thought about my favorite passage of scripture is really the whole book of Philippians. In chapter one, he says, "For me to live is Christ, to die is gain." That's the philosophy for Christian living. The pattern for Christian living is where Paul said, "Let this mind be in you, which was also in Christ Jesus." And then you move into chapter three and you see not only the philosophy and the pattern, you see the prize where Paul said, "I press toward the mark for the prize of the high calling to God in Christ Jesus." Chapter four, you see two things for me. And this is what I want to leave you with. Verse 13, you all know probably, "I can do all things through Christ whom strengthens me." And then verse 19, "That God shall supply all my needs according to his riches and glory in Christ Jesus." And that's what we want to ask for our city is that God provide every need that we have and provide the needs for the people. So let me pray for you and pray for that provision.
Yes, sir, please.
Father, these men and these ladies, they just give it their time, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And I want to pray for them. We start a new year and we ask that you bless them. Or there are some people in our city that have needs. You promise to provide those needs. And we ask you to do that according to your will. We also know that by the prayer of supplication, that our request can be made known unto God. And the God of peace that surpasses all understanding and the God who is present with us and the God who provides for us, who gives us that provision and the power and the strength can meet our needs. So I pray for that upon this city and upon these folks in this room tonight. You're a good God. Lord, we do thank you for just the excitement that's in Georgia right now to be able to look and see that we're Georgia strong. And I thank you for that. And even in a football game last night, as I watched about 30 college kids enjoy that time. Lord, we want that type of joy and happiness to be within the life of our citizens and the life of our people. So we pray for that. You're a good God. We love you. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tommy. Let's call this meeting to order, the January 10th, 2023 City Council for the City of Monroe. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present. And I need an approval of the agenda, please. I'm taking a motion by Ms. Malcolm and I have a second by Mr. Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I'm moving to the approval of the consent agenda, which is pretty easy. It's council and executive session minutes from last month. Planning commission and historic preservation from November and December. I'm sorry, council and session meetings were from December. I need a motion for approval, please. I have a motion by Mr. Little, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to public comment, I have a few tonight. Mr. Simpson, you'd like to come up and mention a little bit for the zoning text amendment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John L. Simpson. I'm an attorney over in Athens, Georgia with the law office of Fort Smith Bentley and Griffin. I represent Mayfield Storage LLC. And I'm here tonight to object to the development regulation text amendment. The city did receive a letter from my colleague, David Ellison, outlining all of the legalities, stating code sections, as well as case law that supports this objection. I'll just give you the Cliff Notes version, or as the young people say, the too-long-didn't-read version, and spare you a lot of the details that are within that letter. But we are here objecting the text amendment as it is currently written. It does read as an unconstitutional amendment. It does impair on the vested right of my client, Mayfield Storage LLC. My client currently uses the parcel and the land for warehouse and warehouse self-service uses. And that is an authorized use as of now under the current zoning ordinance. Using the language as it is written in its current iteration, as I mentioned, would impair on that vested right. Secondly, it would constitute a regulatory taking as well. So our recommendation, and I do have with me tonight Kyle Ward, who's the general partner for Mayfield, as well as Wyatt Howard, who's the project coordinator for Mayfield. And our recommendation is that the text amendment be denied. Or in the alternative, Mr. Ward and Mr. Howard are available to meet with the city attorney and any other individuals that need to be met with to make sure that the amendment, when it's written and voted on by this council, protects the city's interest as well as my client's interest. So we're just going to ask that it be denied because it's in its current iteration. It is unconstitutional. Or in the alternative, table to allow my clients time to meet with the city attorney and any other individuals in the city to make sure that the language of the amendment does not infringe on my client's rights. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Appreciate you coming out. Mr. Ward, did you want to speak as well? Okay, great, thank you. Moving to Ms. Calabrese. Stephanie, thank you for coming.
Hey, y'all. I've got this written. I usually like to sort of talk off the cuff, but I want to kind of keep my thoughts together. I've got a good bit to share, but we'll do it in my five-minute time slot. My name is Stephanie Calabrese. I'm a documentary artist and I've lived in Monroe for the past 26 years. I'm here to offer an invitation to help support racial reconciliation with an aim toward healing here in Monroe and our greater Walton County community. My work is aligned very much with recommendations made by the Monroe Diversity Advisory Board to City Council back in 2021. First, I'll give you some background. In 2017, I'd shared a documentary photography exhibit titled "Hometown: A Documentary of Monroe, Georgia" at the Walton Center for the Arts. And the New York Times featured a collection of the images and did a story on their website. And when the journalist interviewed me, one of the questions she asked was, "Does Monroe feel segregated to you?" And I didn't want to answer that question. I knew in my heart I felt the answer was yes, but I felt too ashamed on behalf of our community to admit it. Like most of you, I love this town and often choose to focus on our positive attributes. There are many. As a documentarian, I struggled with my decision to remain silent on that question. What was I trying to hide? It took another year to build up enough courage to really dig in and attempt to focus to understand the roots of the unspoken racial divide that's very much still in our town today. In 2018, I began a journey that included extensive research. I conducted 40 interviews with mostly Monroe residents, black and white, in their homes and in mine, about their memories and experiences in our town. It was an enlightening and very moving experience. To wholeheartedly understand and love a person or a community, I believe you have to acknowledge and accept the good and the bad with open hearts and minds. The results of this research I share in my documentary feature film, Unspoken. The film offers an honest portrait of our town and an intimate look at the impact of the 1946 Morse Ford lynching segregation and integration through today. As a leader in our community, I believe this film will help you better understand our local history and its influence on present-day challenges. I hope it might offer clues in ways we can come together to help solve them. Unspoken received the Audience Choice Award for Documentary Feature at the Macon Film Festival, a special jury award at the Rome International Film Festival. It's been an official selection at the Morehouse College Human Rights Film Festival, the Chagrin Documentary Film Festival, the Portland Film Festival, and will soon screen at Cinema on the Bayou down in Cajun country later this month. But I'm most looking forward to our screening here in Monroe on Saturday, February 11th at 7:30 and February 12th at 1:30 at On Stage Community Theater. And I sincerely hope you will join us. Following the screenings of the film here in Monroe, we'll host a community dialogue inspired by the film. It will be held on Saturday, February 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Grace Monroe Student Auditorium and led by Haley Smith, the Director of Diversity and Inclusion for Berry College. It's a great opportunity for us to come together face-to-face, diversify our circle of friends and neighbors, share personal stories and exchange perspectives, inspired by the film with an aid toward racial reconciliation and healing here in our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share, and I sincerely hope you'll join us for these events.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate all the work that you've put in, and it's a great, great film. Look forward to seeing it again.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Green. Andrea Green on Church Street to talk about Crown.
The day after Christmas, my family experienced an armed robbery. And I live on Church Street. It was committed by a 15-year-old boy. He put a gun in my husband's face. And my husband had a plea not to shoot him. Crime, we are used to crime. And that's sad that we have to say that. We're used to petty theft. We're used to having to lock everything up. We don't put things out in the trash so people might see what we might have. And we're fine with that. We're okay with that. But we're not okay with being at home the day after Christmas enjoying our holiday to be robbed or potentially robbed with guns at our fam- I could have lost my husband that day. And it's, my, the house across the street from me, a 13-year-old boy stole a car, ran it into their backyard into a pool. The house across the street from me to the site of them, their house has been shot. Last year during, it was a holiday, Fourth of July. Two houses down from them, there was a drive-by shooting that occurred to where one of the cars ran into my neighbor's front porch. The crime is not going away, and it's escalating. And most of this crime is juveniles. It's little kids. We're talking about 10-year-olds. And after talking to my neighbors, one thing that I have pieced together is that there is a- and after talking to the police too, because they're aware of things like this that are going on. There are kids that come to the front door giving a sob story of some sort while teenagers are at their back door going through whatever they can. I saw this myself twice this week. I had to stop and watch if my neighbor was going to get hurt. And I called her after because luckily, everything was okay. She gave this boy money. The story was, he didn't have enough, he was 10 years old. He's on his bicycle. He's going from house to house asking for money. He's looking for a job. No one's going to, no one's hiring him. Parents are going through a divorce, and he has to feed his little siblings. And they didn't have a Christmas. And yeah, it tugs on your heartstrings, but that's not what really, that's not what's happening. And if it is, some, the authorities need to go into that home if these kids are not being taken care of, if they're not being supervised, or if they're not eating. That, you know, they don't need to be knocking at our doors asking for money when it really, it's, 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 that's not what they're doing, though. It seems harmless, but it's becoming- like I said, I saw that twice this week, same kid, twice. And then when I'm talking to the churches to see what they can do to get involved in this, found out the First Baptist Church happened to tell me the story before I had mentioned it. And I said, "I already know who that child is." I know, because it happened twice on my street this week. So I'm asking that, I know everyone is aware of the crime that is going on, but something has got to be done. This is juvenile crime. So when schools are out, something needs to happen. That needs, you know, I don't know what it is, you know, whatever the police chief said he needs, he needs to be given. Because this is, this is, I know we got some new police officers, but we need, I think he says, even another to be at where we need to be in conjunction to the growth of the city. Because what's going to happen is when all these things happen on Church Street, at this new facility that we're dumping all this money into, guess what? It's going to be a shopping crime spree for these kids to go to the people that are coming, that we're inviting to come to the city. So if the people that live here aren't even safe, then these people that, they're going to stop coming. And all the good work that y'all are doing is just going to be wasted. So the crime is an issue, and it's serious crime. Now thankfully, they have caught this kid.
That is the five-minute time limit, Mayor. Excuse me. You have discretion to allow. I'll give you another minute if you don't mind.
They caught this kid in Barrow County breaking in a car again. So it's, this needs to stop before someone like myself, like my daughter, like my husband, like any of you, it happens to or get, you know, worse. You know, this is, this is, it's ridiculous.
I know you're frustrated, and I'm sorry what you had to go through. I heard Troy had been through it, and we talked again about it last night. It's something that we are all aware of, and we're trying to help the chief staff up best we can. And we appreciate your coming in. Moving to City Administrator Report, Mr. Probst.
All right, just a couple of quick things that we're working on, some higher-level stuff. Staff and I are working with a consultant along with DDA Board on a major parking study. Sometimes we're victims of our own success here, and it's hard to find a place to park on the weekends and especially during events. So we're working on that, figuring out the best way forward so that we're not having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for additional parking solutions. But some things may be right under our nose. Working on that, hopefully we'll have some results of that in a couple of months. The long-awaited, long-discussed bypass, I was told. Rite-away acquisition is nearing completion. Notice to proceed for actual construction late spring, early summer. That's according to the DOT. Downtown Green is slowly coming to life out there in the mud. It's coming out of the ground. You'll see some elements for the amphitheater, the bathroom, some of those other elements on the front, like the splash pad fountain area will be coming and taking shape pretty shortly. But once we get out of the mud, everything should go pretty quickly. So that's an exciting project to watch. Anticipated completion date is around late June, early July, based on our rain schedule. The more it rains, the more we're behind. And as you've noticed from some of the reports that are the balance of your agenda, we're continuing on with a lot of our utility bond projects, various stages of construction, rite-away and easements, planning for some other things like the water tower out at Cherry Hill Drive. So we've got a lot going on in the background, and that's the balance of my update right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan?
Hearing none. Assistant City Administrator Report. Thank you, sir. The month of December, our grounds crew and parks guys collected a little over 8,000 pounds of trash. That's about 3,000 pounds more than we had in any other month in about the last three, four years. That's just constant roadside right-aways that we're collecting, picking up. Obviously, I guess people at home, more inbound trash coming to our transfer station, which I'll get on in just a second. Terminal building at the airport, if you hadn't had a chance to go by, absolutely do so. We should be dried in here in the next, I don't know, a couple of weeks. It's starting to take really good shape. Brick on the side, we've been given a completion date of hopefully April 1st. Hopefully, they're not trying to fool us on that one. Then Logan hit the town green. Matthews Park, I would suggest going by. Everything that was on that second phase is now complete. We are adding an entrance/exit sign that'll match the park sign, getting the company to install those. And then right now, the lake is probably half-full of trout that have been going out steadily that we put in in the winter months. And then I wanted to talk about, I'd sent an update out to you guys, I think it was, last week, and then put on social media. To leaf season, it has been slow-go. Our leaf truck worked for about the first week and a half, and it's been at the manufacturer since then where it still is. Obviously, our sweeper had some troubles. We're renting one. Our new one is scheduled to be in hopefully third quarter now of 2023, which gets it here just in time for the next leaf season. But we are kind of doing what you do when you eat an elephant, taking a bite at a time. If people bag it, we're trying to send out once a week our grounds crew to pick up bagged leaves, throw them in a trailer, get those to the innard as well. And then Solidways Transfer Station, we went up on rates because our rates increased dramatically with the landfill and our haulers, but we have not seen a drop in what's coming in on the inbound haulers as of yet. We had a lot threatened at the end of last year just because of the substantial rate increase. But I think they found out that we were still very competitive in the market and also our locale to the areas that they're servicing. It just makes sense to them. So that's the update. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, sir. Moving to department requests, Walton County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Mr. Chief Dykes.
Thank you, Mayor. Walton County is in the process of applying for federal funding to assist with the consultant fees to write the federal update, jurisdictional, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And in doing that, they are requesting that all the municipalities covered by the plan sign the letter of agreement that simply says that we will participate in that process when it comes along, as we have done in the past, because there is a local match requirement, and part of that local match can be met by staff hours that we contribute to the plan. And as you are all well aware, that that hazard mitigation plan, items in that plan that are approved and adopted are then items that we can potentially receive grant funding to implement down the road for mitigation projects. So just formally requesting that we sign the letter saying that we will participate in 2025 when those planning sessions begin.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any questions for Chief Dykes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the letter.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to old business, a preliminary plat review of River Point. I think we just want to ask, table this again, Logan?
Yeah, so as I last updated you in December, we had had a development agreement with the potential developer, sent over to them. They have countered back with several other items that staff is reviewing right now. And we have another follow-up meeting later this month to get that ironed out. So maybe by February. So tabling is requested yet again.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, approved to table by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to new business, the variance at 115 Sixth Street. Mr. Callender?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The variance request before City Council this evening is regarding a request to reduce the minimum lot width for two lots in the Walton Mill neighborhood down there on Sixth Street. This is a request reflective of two existing lots from a number of years ago. They had been combined together prior to your '73 development regulations. So we had no way to re-establish these lots. So the applicant is requesting that council approve variances to re-establish these lots at the original widths shown, 169.25 feet, 168 and a half feet. That's one variance that's in the request, and the second part is to reduce the minimum lot sizes. Both lot sizes proposed are just over 9,000 square feet, but just shy of your minimum for the R1A district, which is 10,000 square feet. It's a pretty straightforward request to re-establish lots that had been existing numbers of years ago in the Walton Mill District. The planning commission recommended approval as submitted without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Any questions for Brad? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this variance?
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Campbell, and I own the property that we're speaking of.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Campbell.
So anyways, I have proceeded here, as you see, requesting this variance and just asked that we could get that approved. Right now, there's one house on the right-hand side of the screen. It is an existing home. On the left, there is, it would be a vacant lot if we can get this passed. And my intention would be to build a similar single-family home there at some point, much like the other mill houses.
I appreciate you coming in, and I see this going well. We shall just see. We'll come back to you if we have any questions. Okay, sure. Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of the variance? Do we have anyone here who'd like to speak against the variance? I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit in just a moment. Moving to new business, I need a motion to elect a vice mayor for 2022, please.
I nominate Larry Bradley.
I have a motion to nominate Larry Bradley, but Mr. Little is there, second?
Second.
A woman? Second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations again. Moving to the appointment of the council representative to the DDA. We did it a little bit differently last year, as Ms. Crawford is the rep to the DDA. Obviously, a great person. Ms. Malcolm also has a business downtown. So instead of Mausha and Lee being a chairman and alternate, we're going to have Mausha and Lee just both come in together. The DDA has asked, Mr. Rosenthal, I couldn't find it in our charter, can they both have a vote, or do they only get one vote? And if so, that would be Mausha. And if so, that would be Mausha, if she's present.
I'll have to take a look. I didn't, I don't believe that the council members are voting member of the DDA. So, um, I did not know that was something that needed to look into, but we'll put our eyes on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, we'll look into that. Um, so I'll need a motion for, uh, Mausha to be the council representative with Lee Malcolm being the secondary representative to the DDA.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, Mr. Probst, election qualifying fees.
So as you know, there's, uh, elections coming up at, in November of this year. That's when it's scheduled anyway. Election qualifying fees are set for $180 for each of those, uh, qualifying districts.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, all entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the variance at 115 Sixth Street. Uh, this, uh, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and/or action. This will be the variance that we just discussed.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Give that second to Mr. Garrett, correct?
Dickson. Dickinson.
Thought I heard two come in at the same time, sorry. Mr. Dickinson, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Jeff. Um, moving, uh, to the zoning ordinance code text amendment number 14, uh, are there any questions for Brad regarding the ordinance?
I would like to ask Brad, uh, if he could comment on the gentleman that spoke earlier concerning that one, because I think he has some additional input.
Yeah, so the, um, gentleman that spoke this evening regarding the application, there has been an application submitted for a certificate of appropriateness on the Highway 78 corridor, and they did include their constitutional objection in the, with the request. But according to procedure, they, they would be considered under the current ordinance because their application was submitted prior to the amendment being into effect. So the application they have submitted essentially is under your current ordinance, not the amendments that are proposed.
Okay.
So, so just so, I guess we all understand. I think what Mr. Callender just said is, they have made application for COA, and that it would be under the old regulation, not under the new regulation, if, if it's approved.
That's correct, sir.
And it would be good for, I, those applications are good for six months, is that correct, Brad?
A certificate of appropriateness, if approved by Planning Commission, expires after six months.
You still have to go for a Planning Commission, but it would be good for six months.
Correct, if it's once approved, yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Brad? Any comments? Does council want, wish to have the ordinance read? We'll have the second reading, uh, at the, or, or discussion of this, the second reading will be at the February 14th council meeting. Um, moving to the second reading of the Development Regulations Text Amendment Number Six, are there any questions regarding this ordinance? You've all seen the changes that, that came across. Any comments or questions for Brad?
And, and, again, Mr. Callender, I, I think that I understand correctly that the objections that were raised at the prior meeting have all been addressed in this revision. Is that correct?
The, the objections raised about the, was it about the zoning ordinance amendments that were proposed just previously?
I'm trying to go back, yeah, I'm sorry.
So this, the, these development regulations are separate action by the council and are not affected by their concerns.
Thank you, Brad. Does council wish to have the ordinance read? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the first reading of the animals ordinance. Uh, as you know, over the last, uh, several years, we've had, uh, an ordinance that was stronger than the county's. We had to bring it back in line with the county. Uh, we've had folks coming in, uh, from some animal rights groups. The county, the county's now changed, uh, their ordinance, uh, and, and we're to bring back in line with that. Logan, you know, add anything?
No, they've pretty much hit it. We, uh, we are re-strengthening it, and we also have to, um, adopt it according to what the county, Walton County, has. And, and that is to comply with an intergovernmental agreement between the two of us and also service delivery, uh, strategy requirements.
Thank you, Logan. Are there any questions? Uh, I will say this, and I will want you to read it, Paul. Um, to those, uh, who are with us tonight, and, and those who might be watching online or on TV out in the ether, um, when you see an animal being mistreated, always call animal control, but, but follow that up with a call to our officers, uh, so, so we can get a report, uh, every single time. Putting it on Facebook doesn't really mean anything. But if you'll call animal control and our officers, uh, that way we, that way we know every, all bases are being covered. Um, and if somebody asks you what to do, animal control and police. Um, if you don't mind reading it, Mr. Rosenthal, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amended Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe, Georgia, regarding the city's animal control ordinances pursuant to the requirements of a 2018 intergovernmental agreement between Walton County, Georgia and the City of Monroe regarding the provision of animal control services. Mayor and the City Council of City Monroe hereby ordain as follows Article One, Chapter 10, Article One of the Code of Ordinances is hereby amended by replacing it with the following in lieu thereof. See attached Exhibit A for the entirety, which includes Chapter 10 Animals, Article One in general, Section 10.1 Definitions, Section 10.2 Animal Control Units, Section 10.3 Duty of Owner to Keep Animals Under Control, 10.4 Duty to Keep Animals Under Restraint, 10.5 Control and Removal of Animal Waste, 10.6 Enforcement, 10.7 Disposition of Inbounded Animals, 10.8 Public Nuisance Animal, 10.9 Abandoned Animals, 10.10 Biting Animals, 10.11 Establishment of Infected Area Quarantine, 10.12 Confinement Area of Facility, 10.13 Vaccination of Dogs and Cats Required, 10.14 Certificate of Vaccination, 10.15 Vaccination Tags and Collars, 10.16 Adoption, 10.17 Discretion, 10.18 Interference with an Animal Control Officer, 10.19 Humane Treatment of Animals, 10.20 Liability of County Officers and Employees, 10.21 Violations. Sections 10.22 through 10.50 are reserved. Article Two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article Three, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the Mayor and the Council of City Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes the first reading this 10th day of January 2023, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. We'll have the second reading on Valentine's Day. We won't make you read at that time unless one of these folks decide they don't need to go out on a date that night. Um, and that was pretty fairly quick, um, meeting until we get right here. District items, uh, does anybody have anything to report or discuss? Ms. Malcolm?
No, just thank you to all the city staff for a phenomenal Christmas parade and, um, really we're impressed with cleanup and orchestration of the whole event.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Voice?
No, sir.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Mr. Gregory?
Uh, yeah. First off, good dogs, uh, really excited about back-to-back championships. Uh, and second off, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, if you have not yet heard, that we'll be replacing the kiosk, um, outside City Hall for bill pay. That'll happen on January 28th, and we hope to be done by the 31st, I believe. That's, that's the hope. You know how construction goes. Um, you're able to pay online, as usual. Uh, you're able to call up here if you're not able to pay online or if you're not able to make it within business hours because you're at work. Uh, so just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that that's an, that's an option, and also we're advertising that on social media. So if there's anybody you know that needs to make arrangements, please let them know.
Not sure if you saw today that council and the Walton County Commission, Board of Commissioners have been invited to tour Child's Voice. Did you see that?
I have not seen that. I thought, I saw an email with a Child's Voice on it, but I have not, or Child Advocacy Center, but I have not been able to.
Okay, I believe it's, uh, I believe it's February 10th. But either way, if you would, uh, check your emails, and if you can come, it'd be great. That's, uh, that's Lauren and Lindsay, and just a great group of folks, uh, that work for our kids. Uh, Mr. Little?
Yeah.
Mr. Dickinson?
No, sir.
All right, well, I have a few things. Um, one, I missed at our December meeting, uh, but Lee is a grandmother again. Uh, Mac Campbell was born on December 4th, fifth grandchild?
Yes.
Fifth grandchild, so congratulations to Lee and Andy, and they can shake those babies up and give them back to their parents. Um, two, and, and Lee already touched on, on the phenomenal job from Public Works with, with the parade, um, and the whole team, the whole team with the parade. But, uh, I want to tell Chris, uh, that Public Works team who's handling all the leaf and all of the, the trash, and Danny and Jeremiah, uh, your teams have been outstanding. Um, and then Rodney and Brian with, uh, electric and especially gas on Christmas Eve. Uh, not used to eight degrees around here. Um, and they did, they did an outstanding job. And I know they would have liked to have been home with their families, um, and I appreciate they were here for us, so I appreciate it. Um, one more thing, uh, Brian Thompson, uh, and I know we're getting toward the end. Um, we do have an executive session tonight. I've asked Brian to give us a little bit of a fiber update to let us know where we stand, where we can expect to go over the next month, and then to have it all complete in a couple of months after that.
Yeah, I know everybody hates to see me as the one when you're trying to get out of here, but I'll make this as quick as possible. Uh, give you a little history. We started this project back a few years ago. Spent the first six to nine months in the middle of COVID, trying to figure out what to do. Uh, but it was good. It gave us planning, gave us time to, uh, plan this project out. Over the past few years, we've put in well over 150 miles of fiber, route miles, not fiber miles, route miles. Most of those have multiple conduits with multiple fibers with up to 144 count inside of each fiber. Majority of the underground was put in inside of neighborhoods that were already existing, had their grass, had their sod, and we have had very minimal complaints. I, I, I think I've got two or three calls from John for people that were upset, but we handled those very quickly. But to get to the end of it, we're at a point where I think all y'all have wanted me to be for the past couple of years, at a point of mass installs. Um, so I've put a new report we'll have in every month. Um, it's a new line or a new page in my, my report. And in that report, if you look at the top of it, and this has changed tremendously over the past couple of days and will again over the next couple of weeks, we have 1,450 some odd, when this report was done, customers ready to install. What we found, if you don't want to go out and hire a whole bunch of installers, you have to hire contract installers. Well, those contract installers want you between 700 and 1,000 just to show up. So we've got to that point. Um, on top of that, over the, this past week and next week's weather holds, we'll have another 500 added on top of this. So we'll be right there at 2,000, which is over half of what we have inside the city limits of Monroe already. So saying that, we have hired, uh, two contract install firms. One has four installers, and one can scale. He can scale from one to whatever we want to pay for. Uh, we are looking at a third group. Uh, we will meet with them later on this week, or first of next week. We hope to have all those people coming in, starting at the end of this month and pushing into next month. Now, down at the middle of this report, you'll see a report built by neighborhood. And our plan, we've had some issues when we go into neighborhoods of getting responsiveness of the customer. So our plan now is to roll into the subdivision. We've got a flyer, basically that flyer says, "Look, fiber's ready. If you're our customer, existing customer, we'll be contacting you shortly to set up your install. If you're not our customer, please call us immediately." Uh, and what we want to add to that is a timeline on when we will be cutting off the cable TV internet for two reasons. Number one, that saves me on bandwidth going to this cable TV side. It allows me to shut down portions of the network, which helps the rest of the network. But the big thing is to give impetus to the customer to meet us at the home and, uh, get this install done, get this transition done. In preparation for that, we have had plow contractors going out to our existing underground subdivisions, contacting the, uh, customer, and going ahead and getting the drop installed. That's one of the biggest complaints we have on underground installs is why is my drop still laying on top of my yard? You know, you didn't install a week ago, why is the drop there? So we've got well over 100 of those done, and we're doing 20 to, we hope to scale to 50 a week or maybe even 100 a week if we can get more plowed, uh, people. Um, but that's going well, it's moving forward. Uh, that's all the underground. Now, overhead, I'll tell you this, I, I, I bit off on Corning's design plan and rode that wagon to the end of the trail. But, uh, one of our employees, Brandon Brown, who handles most of our outside plant construction, managing those construction guys, was like, "Ran, just keep it simple. Let's just build it like this," and came up with a plan. And that plan has worked, and it has exponentially allowed us to move forward on the overhead side. In two weeks, he had the Baker Street area and, uh, back down to Spring Street, uh, Forest Drive, several subdivisions done in weeks, not months, uh, which was a huge thing. So we will be targeting everything on this west side, coming back from Brelo Drive and OLT we built, back down to the Methodist Church. Then we will start in the Church Street area, back into Davis Street and all that. And the reason we're doing that is as we push people to our streaming product, those are the most-used nodes, the most overused cable TV nodes that will cause bandwidth, uh, bottlenecks. Uh, and then we'll just keep moving forward. Uh, we, I hope to be able to scale to, most of these contract installers want four a day. If we can get 10, 12, 15 installers in, we're doing four a day each, uh, we're going to move along pretty quickly. We just got to keep our construction up, keep it moving forward. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, sir.